Welcome to the February 18th, 2025 meeting. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agenda and speaker request forums are located at the back of the chambers if anybody wants to speak on anything on our behalf. So I guess this time we'll do a call to order and we'll roll a roll call on determination of a quorum. We don't have anybody on teleconference, so we'll join in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for being here today on this cold and blustery chilly morning and thank you for the county snowplower guys that were out all mornings making sure we could get here in the city, the snowplowing people. So we'll have a review of the agenda, so look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion from...
Second.
Motion from Drews and a second from Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move to the consent calendar. At this time, the Board of Commissioners use the consent calendar to act on non-conventional routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by the one motion and one vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of board members or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following as listed. And at this time, do we have anybody from the public that wants to remove anything? I don't see anybody from the public, but I do know we have one item, number letter C, that needs to be removed, so we'll remove C. And then the rest of them, anybody else have anything? That was from Alderman Dur or Commissioner Dur was number, letter C. Anybody else want anything removed?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C.
Second.
Motion moved by Mr. Ross Connect and seconded by Commissioner Haddock. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we'll go on to letter C, and this one is to acknowledge the auditor's account of the treasurer, and we'll go to Commissioner Dur on item letter C.
Yeah, it's just a correction that I pointed out to the auditor's office, which I think they've made for you to sign here, but on our agenda, it's got the accounting and our financial accounting, and it's got the date of the financial accounting is January 31st of 2024, and the correction has been made, it should be 2025, but the one on our agenda is 24, so we just need to denote that correction.
Thank you. I guess we need a motion to approve that since it's been corrected originally.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dur and a second by Commissioner Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. So we will move on to number seven. Second reading of ordinance number 795, Deputy State's Attorney Alexa Muller, an ordinance establishing requirements for alcoholic beverage license and sales in Pennington County.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Deputy State's Attorney Alexa Muller. This is the second reading on the agenda for the alcohol ordinance. Commissioner Dur did ask our office to provide a memorandum to provide a little bit more context and detail as to why this ordinance is changing, a few of the changes in the law, and then I provided some examples attached to that that we use, for example, the Mini Haha County ordinance, the old ordinance, and the major law that changed, which is how the number of licenses is calculated. At this point, I would ask the board for approval per our recommendation and repeal the old ordinance, and I'll stand by for questions.
We'll go to Commissioner Dur. Are you satisfied with the memorandum?
Yeah, I think it's great, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so the comment I would make is when we, you know, which I have to, you know, jell them to follow up with, is just when we have some of these made, and this one was a total rewrite, and typically if you have an ordinance, you're going to have like strike throughs and reds denoting what the changes are. And in this case, we didn't have that, so I just asked for a little more input, and he did a great job explaining it. And so it's just some of those things when they come forward for an agenda item, and we're talking about, you know, changes or why we're changing something. My preference is that we have those in a memorandum kind of explaining that, so I appreciate it.
Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur.
Thank you, Alexa.
Appreciate the feedback.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Motion to move approve second reading ordinance number 795 establishing requirements for alcoholic beverage licensing and sales in Pennington County. That's the first motion.
Second.
Second by, we have a motion made by Haddock and seconded by Dur. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Chair. Motion to, two is to move to repeal ordinance number 142 establishing fees and requirements for insurance of certain alcoholic beverages with Bennington County as authorized in Title 35 of South Dakota Code of Law laws on the 20th day after ordinance number 795's completed publication.
We got a motion from Haddock?
Second.
Second from Mr. Ross Connect. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Number eight, items from mall auditor, special request retail on sale malt beverage, special off sale malt beverage, and special on sale wine licenses. So did auditor Cindy Muller? Go ahead, Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that we have is the special request for retail on sale malt beverage and a special off sale malt beverage, and this is for the Rushmore Hockey Association for an event to be held on March 11th from 4:00 p.m. to midnight.
Okay.
Chair.
Do we need to move on each one of these or just all of them?
Each one.
Okay, each one, so go ahead.
Move to approve the special request for retail on sale malt beverage, special off sale malt beverage, and special retail on sale wine retailers license for Rushmore Hockey Association at the Ladies and Laces Hockey Game fundraiser, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., midnight on March 11th, 2025.
We got a motion from Haddock, second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ross Connect, and any comment? Commissioner Dur, does you have a comment?
No.
No, no comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now that, now that motion covers everything for you, Cindy?
That covers just item A.
Okay.
It's from B.
Okay, then we go on to B. Okay, I see where you're going.
And D.
New retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, HTR Black Hills. Okay. You find, Auditor Muller, go ahead.
That is the item we're just asking for approval.
It's pretty self explanatory then, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ross Connect.
Move to approve the new retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, HTR Black Hills.
Second.
We have a motion from Ross Connect and a second from Drews. Any comment from the public or from, hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Letter C, transfer retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and retail on sale liquor license with Sunday Sales Horse Creek Resort. Have a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the transfer of retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and retail on sale lic- liquor license with Sunday Sales Horse Creek Resort.
Second.
Is that Drews?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion from Ross Connect and a second from Drews to approve. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. D, February 4th, 2025 amendment, Mr. Tennyson. Do we have a motion on this item?
You want it continued or?
What's up?
You want it continued or you're going to rescind?
I just want to continue it, but...
Yeah, the discussion was, we could take a vote on it today, but I think to give Mr. Tennyson time and that we'd move it off to the next agenda so that proper notification can be made and then we can take action then.
Oh, good. Do we have a motion from Mr. Dur?
What's the date you'd like to continue?
It says on here, March 4th.
Yeah, so the motion would be to give notice of an intent to make a motion to rescind the abatement for Mr. Tennyson as approved by the Board of Commissioners on February 4th, 2025, and continue this item to March 4th of 2025.
A motion?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion from Dur and a second from Mr. Ross Connect. Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, items from buildings and grounds. Thank you, Auditor Muller. Items from building and grounds, Director Davis Purcell, request to purchase FFNE for State's Attorney's Office relocation. Are these lawn chairs?
Yeah. Fortunately not. A little more expensive than that. So I'll just speak on some of the FFNE real quick and then I'll have State's Attorneys come up and talk about who they're relocating to this space. So I think as most, most of you are aware, the Public Defender's relocated over to the old First Interstate Bank Building. They took all of their furniture with them, and so what we're looking at here is the State's Attorney's Office wants to relocate about 13 staff members to the former Public Defender's Office. Right now, I believe I attached the desk options in there to show you the prices that we're working with for those, for those desks. That's about middle of the line. We didn't want to go obviously too expensive or, or too cheap, so we're right in the middle there, and these are the exact same setups that will go out to concourse as well to keep everything pretty standardized. So we're looking at 12 offices that have the L-shaped desk. Those are priced at $3,109, and then one office with a U-shaped desk, which is $4,053. We, we also, Buildings and Grounds is, we're, we're looking for additional FFNE as far as some small conference room tables, some chairs, some bookshelves, things like that that can help out. But in essence, just for the desks, we're looking at roughly $41,368. But what I, what I'm requesting here is a not to exceed amount of $55,000 to allow us to potentially have the, some people install those desks if B&amp;G does not have time to do it, as well as purchase additional items as needed in the instance that we cannot find any additional FFNE in surplus. And so I think before we do the motion, I'll have Laura come up and talk about her department.
Laura.
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Retschel, State's Attorney. You know, this has been a slow build, the fact that we have run out of room at the State's Attorney's Office, and I'm so grateful for Buildings and Grounds because they have really made every effort to accommodate us for a number of years. It started out, we ran out of room and made the decision to convert one of our conference rooms into a cube section that we call Cubetopia. It's actually Megan Kruger that thought of that name, and thank you for those of you that visited our space and saw Cubetopia. It's worked. We have our misdemeanor staff in that cubed area. I am concerned there's a little bit of a fire danger there. They're all smooshed in there with one of their exits blocked, and the creation of Cubetopia created some problems for the entire county really, because we had to move our grand jury proceedings out of our office entirely because we utilize that space to do that, and into the big EOC conference room that we utilize every Wednesday, which is an inconvenience to HR and to emergency management and to the 911 as we are a busy and loud process every Wednesday. It also separated our misdemeanor staff from the misdemeanor attorneys on separate floors, which makes their work a little bit more difficult, and it divided our criminal department into separate floors, which was difficult for supervisors to manage on separate floors. But that's fine, and we've done that for a number of years. But then we ran out of room again, and then Buildings and Grounds was gracious enough to turn our three storage rooms, our storage closets, into offices, and we've been working from those converted offices. We ran out of room again, and we put two staff people in one converted closet. That quickly became problematic. We had to figure out another plan there. And then we went paperless, and we were able to convert our high-density storage into three offices. Those were the offices that you saw right behind the reception area on the third floor. So Buildings and Grounds and the State's Attorney's Office really have done everything that we can do to accommodate our space limitations, but we just continue to run short. So this idea that the State's Attorney's Office might be able to migrate, albeit temporarily, over into the Public Defender's space, was an idea that actually happened in one of these commission meetings when we learned the delay that's going to take place in moving everyone over to concourse. And, and after Mr. Purcell finished one of his presentations, I grimaced at him as he walked back, and he's like, "Come in the hall." And he had this idea, and the sheriff collaborated with us to think that maybe we could temporarily occupy the space that's available. You're heating it, it's right there and, and open temporarily for us to have some space. So here's why it would be such an amazing thing for the State's Attorney's Office. The real problem that the space crunch has created is that our victims' assistance department are in cubes, and at least part of our diversion caseworkers are in cubes. And so those confidential conversations that they're having over the phone are all done in a public space. So a victim's advocate might be talking to a rape survivor in a cube next to someone who's talking about Saturday's football game with a coworker, next to someone who's working through restitution with a theft victim, and it can get very loud and disruptive. And I just don't think we're, we're doing our best client delivery when we're in that kind of space. And so this would allow us to do what we will eventually do when we expand down to the second floor, which is the plan for us eventually, for those people to be in offices and to be able to have those telephone communications in a confidential space, which I really think will immediately elevate the delivery of client services for those victims and for the defendants that we serve in diversion. So confidentiality and privacy are just going to be elevated tremendously, and the expansion of our space is just, if you were up there, you know, it's just so, so needed. So I really ask that you allow us this temporary move. I know it's a huge expenditure of about $50,000, but, and I, I don't have the money, I'll be honest, I don't have the money, so I'm grateful that Mr. Purcell was, was willing to come to my aid and offer this FFNE through his budget. But this furniture will be used. I mean, it is needed. It'll be used eventually either for my people when we move to second floor or to the sheriff's people when they eventually move into what I call the East Tower, when they come to occupy that space eventually. So I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, State's Attorney. Retschel.
Chair.
I would like to have a motion, that we could talk on a motion if we prefer.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion.
A motion to?
I'd move to authorize Buildings and Grounds to purchase the necessary FFNE for the State's Attorney's Office relocation utilizing available bond funds in an amount not to exceed $55,000.
Second.
Motion from Drews and a second from Dur, and then Commissioner Haddock.
Yes, can you tell me how many programs you have in your office besides just doing basically State's Attorney, meaning defending constituents or, or people that come up?
Oh my goodness, so many, so many. And, you know, I just refer you back to my budget presentation, and I, I think I will put myself on the agenda to just walk you through my annual report, maybe at the next week.
How about we do that? How about we, if you get a chance, and I know you've been busy with other things, so we give you an opportunity to put it in writing for us and get it to us? Would that work?
Yes, but it's, some of the space might be because of maybe some of the programs. We're having programs in the courthouse with the Sheriff's Office and Public Defenders.
It'd be nice for all of us to know anyway, and then that way we're not tying up her time today.
I'd love to.
But bottom line is, maybe some of these programs we need to look at as well and see which ones are working and which ones aren't to save space in some of the different areas that we have at this point. Show the ones that are working, show the ones that aren't. I know back in the day, Kevin Toam said he could drop some of his, some of the stuff that he was doing. So the more programs we have, the more space, remember, that we need when you guys are adding to your budgets, when you're adding to your space. A program takes space and then it keeps moving forward. So anything we can do to drop some of those programs that aren't working and to move forward with the ones that are and keep building on those, I would recommend in the future, just from being in some of the diversion programs and some of the stuff, they have kind of morphed into some, some different areas as well. So it'd be nice just to see if we can cut some of our programs through Pennington County just to save space and FTEs at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Haddock. Oh, any other comments from anybody? Commissioner Dur.
Yeah.
Dur.
So yeah, I took the building tour, I think it was last, a week ago Monday, and that was kind of the last tail end that we finished up, and so, you know, did make it through Laura's area, and yes, the employees up there in cubicles and some in victims' assistance, that type of stuff, which is required. And so I'm in support of this move. We're just, we're going to a vacant space, and then part of the conversation would be that this furniture would be utilized at some point in time, and then back to Commissioner Haddock's points, and I do agree that there's a lot of mandated stuff that comes down that, you know, we'll have these conversations as we start the 2026 budget process and looking at some of those. But anyway, we've got the space open right now, and I think the need is there, so I do support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd like to make a comment, and if we could, I think you're in agreement that if we could get some sort of list of whatever, maybe we have a special agenda item for you to bring forward to the, to the commission. And I just wanted to say, you know, we look at, we look at the furniture, and it's one of your tools. I mean, we look at the Sheriff's Department, their tool, maybe their equipment, maybe their, their, their police cars, so it's important to have good tools in your environment there and foster a good environment. So we have any other comments for anybody? We have a motion on the floor, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, and we will lean on Mr. Purcell to operate efficiently and get her some good furniture.
That's right. I'll do my best.
Put it together for priority.
Sounds good.
All right, we'll go on to 9B as FY24 BRIC grant application courthouse tunnel, and this is Mr. Purcell. Correct?
Yes, so I, I put together just a brief presentation here. Shouldn't take too long, but I wanted to give an overview of the, of the courthouse tunnel for some of the new commissioners that just came on in January. So I'll, I'll just do some overview bullet points while this is loading. Essentially, the courthouse is as old as the original, or excuse me, the tunnel is as old as the original courthouse, which is, which was built in 1922, and houses mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure for that building. So currently, well, it was actually originally constructed to route steam lines for heating. A lot of those pipes have been removed, and then other infrastructure has been added in there as necessary. So we've had some structural inspections over the last, you know, four or five years that showed bowed and failing walls on the south and west tunnels. So these tunnels are actively falling or failing at this time, creating a risk of collapse. We did have Albertson Engineering come out last year, and we put together a solution to provide temporary bracing in the tunnel. And so, and just, you know, also, we have 95% construction documents for this tunnel, meaning we are ready to hit the ground running when or if we receive some, some grant funding. We do have a million dollars set aside in the accumulated building fund currently for that project. However, it's probably going to come in a little bit higher than that, and if we can get some, some cost savings or some kickback from a grant, that would be, that would be great. So I'll kind of show everyone here. If I can zoom in a little bit. So this is the original courthouse. The courthouse addition is over here to the right. So the north wall here has no work, but everything in red is the west and south walls that have a lot of issues currently. So again, this is the north wall. It runs all the way under the staircase here, and I'm going to show you some pictures from underneath where you can see this, this wall is in fantastic shape compared to the others. And then this gives another view. This is west, the west side of the courthouse. So all that shrubbery, everything will have to be taken out. It's probably going to be about a eight to 12-foot wide trench at the end of the day to get down to that tunnel. So here is the north wall. You can see there's not much here. This is, if you actually look here, this is the top of the stairs on the outside, and then it goes down there, tapers down. So this is in really, really good shape, and just so everyone's aware, the interior walls of the tunnel are the foundation for the courthouse. None of that is getting touched. I'll show you exactly what's going to get replaced. This is another picture of the north wall here. Let's go. So...
Mr. Chair. Question, Davis. So the north wall has never had any work done? That's all original?
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
It's looking the same thing.
Yep. Yep. So as you can see here, let's see, which way does this go? So I'm just looking, so this, I believe this is the interior wall here, but anyways, what, what will be replaced is the floor, one section of the wall, and the roof or the ceiling, whatever you want to call it. And you can see some of these steam lines still have to be taken out of here, but there is other critical infrastructure that has been ran through here for the MEP systems. And as far as I know, there have been other explorations into if we could reroute that pipe to the interior of the building or somewhere in a chase in the building, and as far as I know, it's just, there's no available space. So this shows you some real issues here on the exterior of that tunnel wall where it's, where it's actively caving in, and this has all been braced. I believe I put a picture at the end. This is another close-up view of that. It's actually pressing itself against some of the pipe, and then this crack that actually runs all the way down this wall here. And then you can see, this was the temporary bracing solution. It doesn't look like much, but it will, it will at least buy us a couple of years if needed. So essentially, what we're looking for is just an approval to apply for this grant, but at the end of the day, I wanted to give everyone an overview of, of what we're looking at here, and it's a, it's a pretty nasty project when you think about it. It's going to be a lot of work, and there's a lot of structural in there. I believe just the structural stuff itself was about $800,000, and then the electrical and, and plumbing pieces were 200,000 to 300,000, so that's where we get to about a, a million to 1.1 estimated cost right now, so.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yep.
Do we get a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Drew.
I'd move to approve the submission of the FY24 brick grant to the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management by signing the grant application processing form and the local match commitment letter.
Second that with this discussion.
Okay, we got a, first by Commissioner Drew and a second by Commissioner Ross Connect for approval, so, and then I think maybe Mr. Ross Connect wants to say something.
If I'm looking at this right, Davis, this is the project, cost shares are as follows, 75% federal grant?
Yes, correct.
So, you know, they, the current administration, they're really going through grants and some of this federal spending, so I just wondered, is that, could that be in jeopardy relative to that?
I'll have Jennifer answer that question.
Okay.
Ms. Jennifer?
Jennifer Williams-Curl, and I'm the grant manager. I called and talked to Jim Poppin at the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management when the initial freeze was announced, and he said that right now, they have not been given any indication that these grants are going to be impacted by any of the executive orders, and so their plan is to continue on as planned. We've got a couple other federal grants, and the information I've gotten from those grant overseers has been the same as, as of right now, business as usual with those grants and those monies.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, some of these I think are going to get weeded out, but this one here looks like a very worthy cause, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, and this brick grant is associated with money that was approved by Congress, so it should remain available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Thank you, Mr. And with Ellen, more?
So it appears that, you know, the, the integrity of the courthouse itself is in great shape.
Correct.
And the foundation obviously is, is the first place that's... great shape. And the foundation obviously is, is the first place that's probably going to leave us or, you know, give away. And so I think it's very important that maintenance-wise, that we continue to take care of that foundation as well as we possibly can. Davis, are there old steam pipes in there then that can come out also?
Yeah, some of them have been removed, but there's still some that remain that will be removed. All pipe that is not necessary will be removed in this project. And then we'll run a lot of new pipe in there as well, just to get everything upgraded and up to date. So.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew. Any other questions from the, I just want to make one comment. I appreciate, the fellow that took us on the tour, what's his name, is it?
Dave Eccleston.
Dave. I just want to give a shout out to Dave. He's on top of this stuff and under your direction. I think this will happen really smoothly and efficiently. So.
Yeah, my last question, the one picture showed, looks like two-by-sixes were used to support that?
Yeah, there's some, there's some braces on the wall here. And you can see, these are actually, I don't know what size these are here, but these are laminated wood, like beams essentially. So I mean, this.
LVT.
Yeah, this, this will hold up for a while. But again, it's not a permanent solution, and it gives us almost zero access to the point where we, I mean, I believe that's only about two and a half feet off the ground. So then we're crawling through the tunnel to repair any of the infrastructure.
So did we do that internally, or is that something that we bid out?
That was bid out. We had Albertson draw up some specs, and we only spent about $5,000 on this. RCS, RCS Construction did it last year.
That was my question, just what we spent for that.
Yep.
Thank you for the good questions. Any other questions? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Here in none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. And we will go on to item 10, recruitment for IT director. So, and that would be HR, Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. That last meeting that I brought forward informational only for the Commissioners to decide as far as the direction that they wanted to give to HR to recruit for the IT Director. And in the interim, that we do have a very strong internal candidate who has been going through succession planning with the current IT Director, Lori Wager, who is going to be resigning effective March 27. And so my motion, this is an amendment to the, the motion that was in the memorandum that I sent, but my motion recommendation is move to approve the HR Director to schedule a board interview with the IT internal candidate, Mike Iverson, in executive session on March 4, 2025. Can I stand for questions?
Thank you. Is, we have any, let's get a, should we get a motion on the table here, guys?
Chair, I'd like to make, not a motion, but move to approve the HR Director to schedule interview with IT internal candidate.
Yeah, Commissioner Hancock, can I stop you for one second? She just read the motion. If you want to re, we changed it from what was on here a little bit.
Well, I think it should be changed to that, and then see if he's, if we decide we want the internal candidate, and if that doesn't work out, then post it.
Right. And that's what we're trying to do. So what we're trying to do is set up a board interview, so.
Yeah, but then it says to approve HR Director to post the position both externally, externally. So I think we ought to interview him first, and then if it doesn't work out.
That's, that's what.
Correct. You're going to post after.
If we decide.
Right. If the board decides that they want to move forward with posting, then we will. But right now, the recommendation is to have a motion to have him come to the interview.
Read that one more time for her.
Yes. Move to approve HR Director to schedule a board interview with the IT internal candidate, Mike Iverson, in executive session on March 4, 2025.
Okay. And then you post it afterwards, if it doesn't work out?
Right.
Okay.
So move on that motion.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second here?
Yes.
Exactly. We got a motion for Drew and a second by Hancock for, she read it into the record. Did you get that okay, Jan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we're all clear about that. I'm.
Thank you.
We just felt that it was important that we don't keep the IT Department in limbo. People that work in IT are very particular about, you know, they can work anywhere they want, and they, you know, they got a good environment, things like that. And we want to make sure they have some direction going forward and not have a limbo. We appreciate what we've had in the past, and the succession plan is, we want to make sure we give everybody a fair opportunity in not keeping people hanging out there in, in the wind, trying to figure out what they need to do. So thank you, guys. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Carol, let's see. Okay, and you're going to cover for Walter, who's.
Correct.
He, he's ill today. So item number 11, items from safety, from Safety Committee. And we're going to have Carol Bancroft.
Yes.
Standing in for Walter McDuff.
This one is for informational only, that Walter will be back on March 4 with a motion. But the Safety Committee has met and drafted their bylaws and the county's safety policy, which he would like to have you review, which is attached to his memorandum, so that you are ready to vote on that in the next meeting.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll do that. So there's no action required. It was just more informationally. Appreciate it. And when you talk to Mr. McDuff, tell him our, our prayers are with him and.
Thank you.
Be careful, that flu is just really bad right this time of year. So.
It is.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And we'll go on to item number 12, items from the public speaker request forms received. We don't have any speaker request form from the public. So action will not be taken on these items. So we'll move on. Seeing no speaker request forms, we'll move on to item number 13, items from the chair, commission members, the time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any item brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the board for the future consideration. So I guess I'll look to the board to see if they have any items that they would like to have us consider in the future. So I guess I'll start with Commissioner Roskinek. Do you have anything, sir?
Yeah, the only thing I'm doing is just watching some of the bills that are coming out and corresponding with the folks that produce those bills, just trying to focus on the ones that would pertain to the Black Hills. So that's about all I got to report.
Thank you. Yeah, we see that, you know, Amber made the top fold of the Hill City paper. So.
Who did?
Amber Hall.
There will be a cracker barrel.
All these legislators are going to solve our property tax problems for us. So we're waiting for that to happen.
There's two or three proposals out there, and we'll see if any of those.
You get a good one coming across. You let us know. Commissioner Hancock, nothing today? And then Commissioner Drew's?
No.
Nothing today? Okay. Commissioner Drew?
Yeah, the, I wasn't going to talk about it now, but I will since Commissioner Hancock brought it up. But I think it's a, getting back to the directive to our state's attorney about talking about the programs and those types of things that we have. And I think it should not be just the state's attorney's office. It should be countywide. And so obviously, as we go through the 2026 budget process, which we're, you know, coming up on shortly, it won't be that long, we'll be in the process. But tying back to some of the comments that I presented to the board, you know, last month, or about looking at line item expenditures, about five-year history, five years ahead, five-year look back. And I think part of that obviously is just tied into, you know, all the programming that we have, and also looking at all the contracts that the county has with every player that we have as part of the building tour. I mean, it was just, you know, discussed about building space that we have and about partners that we share that space with, and making sure that, you know, as other partners grow their footprint along with us, that there is a cost analysis as to what that is worth. And so I think that whole thing is a talking point to, and we can, you know, further talk about it down the road, maybe, you know, in the next couple of months as we prepare for the budget process. But it's something that we need to look and evaluate as we prioritize, you know, how we're going to spend the taxpayer dollars. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And the other comment I would make, just an informational one, would be that last week with IT and HR at the Planning Department, Joan and Jan were there, and myself, looking at another agenda software. Currently, we're using Granicus. And Granicus is not working primarily for the Planning Department and their ability to get some of that stuff through the workflows. So we had a second meeting. It's one that we previously, we had one meeting with this company called Diligent. Last week was a follow-up for them to build a kind of some templates that the Planning Department would use for their workflow process. And so they were able to do that, something that Granicus, I believe, promised the departments, but is not able to perform on. And so anyway, it was a productive meeting in my mind. I think the Planning Department was impressed, creating a workflow and just talk about the time savings and getting that transparency out there and the information. And so anyway, it's just something we're looking at. And I, I asked him to put together a cost proposal and send that to Joan, and then we'll have a discussion. I'm going to assume if we have the cost proposal and some follow-up, at least it's something I think within the next month, we would have on an agenda to talk about. We do have an agreement with Granicus that goes through '26, and we would have to cancel or renew with them, I believe, by April of 2026. Otherwise, it's an automatic renewal. But the feedback that I'm getting from, you know, the users, it's not working for, you know, what we think we should be paying for. So we will have a discussion about that, and I would say within the next month. And the reason I would like to have a discussion about it sooner rather than later is because I would like to have a new agenda process up and running by our budget process.
Perfect. I think that, that makes sense. And I appreciate your efforts in that area because it, it'll help a lot when we can get the agendas digitized and get them on and then be able to interface with Planning Department and.
Yeah. And the big thing for planning is just an internal workflow, getting stuff ready for an agenda and having that approval process. But anyway, I think, you know, in a month or so, we'll be ready to have a conversation about that. So.
Perfect.
Can I ask you something?
Commissioner Hancock.
So you'll be putting a lot of stuff on this.
Your question to Commissioner Drew. Okay.
So you're going to put most of this stuff, like from planning, so we can put it up on the screen? Is that what that program's going to do? So when we're talking about something, or even when we have agenda, can we put it on the screen so people can follow along with it? Is that the bottom line?
Yeah, that's part, yeah. The ultimate goal is when the agenda is built, you know, we have, we have a process right now, you know, that I've plugged into a jump drive. And I've got hard copies of some information. And, you know, the departments that do present on the screen, like Mr. Purcell, that just presented, you know, the documents and the pictures, I think, you know, that's how I would like to see all agenda items go. So getting back to what you addressed is that, yes, it would be, we discuss the ability and the technology that we have, and even going up to concourse, the technology is there. But as we go through all of these agenda items, each agenda item would have all the attachments related to it. And then as we're discussing, and let's just say if you have a, you know, a Planning Department item, and there's, you know, 50 documents attached to it, whatever the case, but, you know, the Planning Department would have the ability only to pull up those documents that are germane to what the discussion is. The rest of it's there for everybody to review. And then as every department is presenting of anything of relevance, and there's memorandums, there's attachments, photographs, PowerPoints, whatever the documents may be, that as we run through each agenda item, that they are displayed on the screen, so that everybody in the room is seeing the same information the board is. And the other thing related to that is they can timestamp the video, and so the video would be laid in right into the agenda. And so if you go back and somebody wanted to look at an agenda item, you click on that agenda item, and on the left side, you could pull up the agenda item, and you could look at the attachments. On the right side of your screen is the video if you want to watch what happened. So that's the ultimate goal.
That works for every department?
Correct.
When they submit it, so they can submit their agenda item with the attachments, it can go into that program, or they already have that program, and it just submits through that program on their own computers? Or do they have to send it to Joan?
No. And right now, what they're doing with Granicus, I do believe, is that each department is submitting their agenda items through Granicus software, which the departments have access to. And then it goes in a roll-up, and then the Commission Office is the one that is wrapping that up to create the, you know, final product in Granicus. But the other thing that goes with kind of this process is that the workflow is different in this software. They would allow the Planning Department to set up a workflow with all of their documents and forms and not recreate those, you know, and send them around as, let's just say, a PDF or a Word document. It can be created in the workflow with approval process going forward. And, I mean, watching the face of Brittany and Jason in the meeting as we went through the software proposal, they were just shocked that, you know, it was checking the boxes. So it was nothing but smiles, and we're hopeful. So.
Thank you. I think that's a long time coming, especially also for the public to see what we're doing on the screens is, for me, is a win-win situation instead of them kind of guessing what's on our papers and not knowing what, half the time we're talking about if they are interested. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I might mention, you know, items from the Commission is that you and I met with DOE, and I'm getting a lot of emails in the last six months from Jim Skoll, who's complaining about how long it takes to get a building permit. We go to DOE, they say you got to go to the city. You go to the city, they say you got to go to DOE. What I want to do is sit down with the city, our DOE, and planning, and a developer, and let's find out if the, if the system needs to be improved or the way they're doing it. Because right now, when I get these calls from Jim Skoll, and he, I mean, they're not, there's a problem out there somewhere.
Right.
And so I'd like to work with Ron and see if we could set that meeting up going forward, when we get somebody from the city to join in.
I appreciate that, Ron. I, yeah, that was part of the problem is, because they met with them once, and they came up with a conclusion. And then when we walked away, the conclusion walked away with us. So we do need to meet again and, and figure out what happened. And I talked a little bit to the Department of Equalization Director about that a little bit, you know, obviously, the, the map drawers and the DOE Department, and then planning's in one department. And then, but when you get behind so many drawings, and then we had a plan that worked, we thought the city was on board with that plan. And then for whatever reason, when we walked away, like I said, it walked away with us. So I think the only way to resolve it is to get in the same room. And so I'll get ahold of Vicki and find out who has the authority to make that decision over there, because she obviously doesn't have time for that. But we need to, we need to get it resolved because we, we have a whole handful of developers is all we have. And if they're not building houses, we don't got houses going up in the air. So it makes no sense to, to hold them up. So I appreciate that.
I'll be more than happy to participate.
I know you will. And you've been on me about it now. I'll kick myself in the pants, and we'll get rolling.
Sounds good.
I appreciate it. And then, yep, and then there was one other question I had about, I forgot what it was. I'll get it later. Oh, I know what it was. We're talking about, when we're talking about having our, asking our department heads and our elected officials to, to bring forward a plan in the future about going through the budget. Like you said, I know that's important. And I, I think that's a really important thing. We, at some point, us as Commissioners need to have some sort of template or something that we need to, so they know what they're doing. Otherwise, we're going to get 50 million different things coming forward. So if, when we talk about this, if we can detail that down, and maybe, maybe Laura's going to be our guinea pig on this. I don't know. I hate to do that to you. But that way, we're not got you all over the board, bouncing back and forth, not getting the information or you. So think about that, guys, up here on the Commission, what we want. I know Jerry's really been in, in-depth on some of that stuff. I'm leaning on him to help us out a little bit in that area there. But I think it's important to look down at some of these items that are, been passed along through the years. So.
So Chair?
Commissioner Hancock.
I think you can set up a meeting different than what's going on with our agendas now or our commission meetings. That way, we have a discussion on the budget and what we're looking at moving forward. That way, Jerry or anybody else here has a direction of where we need to go and what the staff is kind of looking at for the future of how we want to do business. I think most of it, I have talked with, when Jerry had put some of his stuff out, that the staff was, thought that was a really good idea with the five-year plan, the five-year agenda, that kind of thing. We just want to make sure we set it in stone, so everybody's on the same page. And I know some help others to get some of their stuff moving forward. So it'd be nice to have a special meeting pretty soon, in March, maybe, to get ready for April, May budget session. Like I said, and it also is good for department heads to know, like you said, for the agenda moving forward. So.
Appreciate that. I think we'll, we'll go for that.
Somewhere in March or into March. Jerry, or where were you thinking at that point? Or Gary and Ron, where we needed to start having discussions on? start having discussions on budget?
I'm looking, she's sitting in the corner being kind of quiet, but Cindy, could you come up? If that's all right, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Cindy, Commissioner Dur has a question, if you don't mind.
He's hiding.
That'd be hiding from us, too.
A headache.
I'm assuming outside of elections, this is your favorite topic.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
So when do, when do you begin the budget process? When do we kick that off typically?
We like to get direction from the board as far as, you know, what we're gonna be looking at for increases for salaries so that departments don't have to go back and recreate that side. So hopefully, we can do something like that in April or May. Budget hearings are usually held in June so that we can get the, get to provisional.
All right, so I would say, hell, so if you were getting a lead time on some of this stuff, and you plug some financials in, so you're talking payroll and, you know, the benefit package, that type of stuff, and so the employees going out to departments typically, when does, when does a board typically make that decision?
I haven't paid too much attention, because that's been handled basically through the commission office when those memos went out to the board.
All right. So my comment would be regarding that, that, you know, we should have, probably starting, I would say, in April, because I think it's by June, you have to send the budget pack, the budget forms out to department heads, just a legislative statutorily thing? Is that like the first week of June? When it says, you know, those old statutes, you will do this, you will do this, you will do that?
Yeah.
So anyway, I would say probably in March, we should have some conversations and start those, but in April, at least by the first part of May, we should have an idea talking about, you know, getting some cost analysis coming from, and I would say the HR office about, you know, what is a COLA increase gonna cost, you know, discussions about COLA increases, continued step increases, and what that personnel package is going to cost. And then if we have concurrence in some of those discussions, and then saying, yeah, go ahead and plug those numbers in, we're gonna say COLA, you know, continued step increases, et cetera. And then I'm assuming about that point in time, it would be presentations from HR as well. I'm not sure who would lead that, but talking about our self-insurance fund, and, you know, if they have any ideas about what the recommendations would be on any increases. And so at least handing kind of a discussion anyway, early on about payroll, which is a large part in our benefit package. And then I would say, to help us get to that point, it would, should probably start in April as well, where we have, starting in April, more educational, maybe less budget to a certain degree, but I think in April, to help us get ahead of that game, so you're not, all of a sudden, the auditor is not saying, here's 100 changes we want to make to the budget, and we're getting down to those timelines that are not fun to crunch those numbers. So, but I think probably in April, we should begin having discussions as well, or if not, the second meeting in March, but at least by the first meeting in April, have discussions about going back to conversations initiated by Commissioner Hancock, which, you know, go back to everything that we're doing in the organization. And a lot of this is going to tie to, you know, a lot of the projects that we have. I mean, there's a lot to it, there's a lot to cover before we actually get into, you know, the budget stuff. But I think it's appropriate that the board, at least by April, gives some direction to department heads as to how we want them to build the budget. I mean, for their departments and looking at some of those projects that are out there. And obviously, you know, we've got a jail project to talk about, and then prioritization, so. And the other thing, and again, you know, it's a conversation we could have, too, we're just getting ready to talk about legislative matters, but, you know, what some of theirs, I think I'd read yesterday, there were 47 or 48 different bills in the legislature related to property tax. And so, you know, what, you know, some of these passed, and they're talking about capping our, you know, ability, and so that would have an impact on our revenue, and then what we would have to do, you know, based on that. And outside of the legislative process and the bills, we've already got, you know, the word that the taxpayers would like to see, you know, some relief. And the one thing you can do at the local level is start with your internal spending and the county budget, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
In the past, we've had working sessions on budget with the commissioners, just to kind of go over, like, the fund balances and the different revenues that we get, those kinds of things. So, you know, maybe that's something that we could do towards the end of March, just in preparation for that.
I think a special meeting towards the end of March would be appropriate to get started, because I think there's gonna be some changes that are, people are wondering, they're gonna have to understand what, what we want. I mean, just to throw something at them, everybody's gonna be like, okay. So I think we got that resolved. We'll, we'll put something in.
Into March.
Into March, yeah. We'll have a special meeting to at least iron out some of the details for, you know, so everybody has some direction, so, that we're not.
No, and again, yeah, I think it's a good thing, because you want all the information and, you know, put it out there in a workshop. It's hard to get through it on an agenda, but then at least start some of these conversations and then look at, you know, the picture.
Basically, make sure each of the commissioners have kind of an idea where they want to go for the 2026 budget, what we can improve on, what has worked in the past, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll have the commission office, we'll get, you know, we'll get something scheduled, and we'll get it out to the department heads, so they understand when we might have a special meeting. And, you know, limited to a couple hours, beginning the first time, and so we're not rambling on.
Yeah, two hours. Good luck, Ray.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item number 14, and Commissioner Dur, you can carry on. It's 2025 legislative session, so you kind of dipped your foot into that one there a little bit, so if you want to finish that up, we'd greatly appreciate it if there's anything exciting come down, and we'll let anybody else tune in that wants to tune in, chime in on that, so.
Yeah, Gary Diver built at the Cracker Barrel on Saturday, which, the second one so far this legislative session, it was well-attended, you know, good crowd, and again, a lot of the questions came back to property tax, and there's a lot of various property tax bills out there, both on the House and the Senate side. It sounds like there's been some consensus on Governor Roden's proposal coming forward. And, but anyway, there's, all of this stuff is in the pipeline, nothing's been festered out. And so as you went back and forth, I mean, yeah, the majority of all the discussion related to, you know, property tax appropriations, a big thing in the legislature, that they have to sort out before they decide what money is left over, because they're operating under Governor Gnome's budget proposal. And we're in that proposal, you know, I believe there was funding for the penitentiary. So the, you know, the penitentiary is a big talking point for them about if the state's going to put that money in and basically pay cash for the new penitentiary and continue their funding without going out for bonds. And in the state's constitution, you cannot, you know, we can't have debt, and so, but they can go out and bond, but, so anyway, it's been, I know Governor Gnome was pushing for that, I believe. Anyway, I've seen some things where the current governor is pushing for the penitentiary, so it comes down to what dollars are left over through their appropriations to fund all the other, you know, legislative bills in front of them, many of which require funding. So talking about cutting to NPR, funding to, or not NPR, but South Dakota Public Broadcasting, cutting NPR is okay, too. But the, you know, the airport discussion, I know Rapid City Regional Airport is pushing, you know, for that legislative funding. I think a year ago, they asked for 30 million funded in the legislature for regional airports across the state. They got 10. This year, they're back with a $30 million ask. So there's, you know, a lot of, you know, bills out there that are, you know, looking for appropriations and funding, and the big grill in the room, as they discussed, is the penitentiary. And so, you know, the regional airport is one within our area, the other one, there's a couple bills up, Senate Bill 16 and Senate Bill 6. One of those is related to funding dollars for the expansion at Ellsworth. And the other one is that the growth at Ellsworth, that that excise tax that would be captured from all the building projects at Ellsworth would be captured and then given to Ellsworth Authority, and then Ellsworth Authority would be utilizing that money captured from that excise tax that would go to, you know, development in and around Ellsworth. So, anyway, and I know Gary's up on some of the other bills, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Drew?
Jerry did a good job on that. The, yeah, the, the funding of the, of the penitentiary is going to be the, the big crucial point as to how they do that. If they want to pay all cash, there won't be any money left for other items. And so if they choose to take maybe 100 million of that and, and bond that 100 million, then they would, that would free up some dollars for some of these other projects. But there's a, there's a House concurrent resolution, and resolutions don't mean a lot, but there's a House concurrent resolution 6010, which I think we should oppose as a commission. This is one that's sponsored by Representative Odenbach. Proposes to set up a legislative task force to really determine how to develop the Black Hills. And so, which would include residential, et cetera, throughout. And last year, we heard, you know, the constant cry of local control, of which I believe in, and now this year, this would take it from local control to state control. And, or at least a study committee that would be established by legislators throughout the state as to recommendations as to how we develop the Black Hills. And with our, especially in Pennington County, with the planning document that we have that goes out to 2040, I think we've got a, a strong handle on what we want to see done. Obviously, this doesn't, wouldn't impact the Forest Service, but the, the planning document that we have could be in question at that point in time if a task force is looking at the development of the various counties in the Black Hills. So I'd just like to see our opposition expressed to, to that particular concurrent resolution.
Appreciate that. 60-10 was that?
That's HCR 6010.
HCR 6010.
Yep. And, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sure Commissioner Roskin would have to weigh in on that one.
So Gary, how does mining play into that? You know, when you talk about trying to do a roadmap of the Black Hills, and, you know, you got tourism is their second-largest industry, you know, ag is the main. And so, I'm not anti-mining, but this lithium thing, I didn't agree with the way that turned out.
Well, I think to answer your question, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Yep, you, you go right ahead.
Mining is, is, I think, mentioned in the concurrent resolution, and then that's what legislators spoke about the other day, was mining, establishing hard rock mining ordinances, et cetera, and so forth. And quite frankly, I think that we in the Black Hills are much better equipped to determine what that future should be. And the lithium is one of the, one of the big issues because of the need for lithium for various things. When they talk about data centers and so forth, that's a major need for that. So, yeah, I think that we should just be opposed to the general concept that a study committee statewide be established to determine the future of the development of the Black Hills.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
I'm a local control kind of guy, too, so, Commissioner Dur?
Yeah, it was, that was actually, yeah, that was discussed at the Cracker Barrel about creating that, and so there was some, you know, disagreement amongst the panel between Senate side and the House side, you know, about that. And so the, it was Senator Taffey Howard that spoke about the need to have this kind of summer study on this, and we had the discussion internally there that I am, you know, I support Commissioner Drew's position on this. You know, we're talking about, and I'd mentioned to one of the legislators, the states got their hands full, and we just went through a major issue about, you know, referred Law 21 about local control. And so on one hand, you, you know, there's people that are, you know, were against, you know, this eminent domain situation, and you have to have local control. And on the flip side, then, talking about having the state come down and have discussions about, you know, because it was specifically mentioned about development, about development in the Black Hills and that type of stuff. And again, when you get down to development and doing those things, that's local control. And so that's why you have local school boards, you have local commissions, the city council, et cetera. And when it came down to the, let's just use an example on the Black Hills, when the mountain pine beetle situation got out of control, the first one to jump on board and work with the feds on mitigating the mountain pine beetle infestation was county government. And so it was in partnership that county governments had with the Black Hills National Forest that we went in and got those dollars and did mitigation on federal ground, and then it was later the state got involved. And so local control is local control, and I believe that, I think we should, you know, draft a letter and state some of these issues and send that to our legislators in opposition of that resolution.
I agree.
Commissioner, Hancock, you agree?
I agree with sending a resolution. Bottom line, just like Law 21, a lot of people in the state voted against having the state take control. Why would the state want to go and look at the Black Hills and not look at the whole state? If they're looking at economic development, are they looking at everything? We basically, well, we know we have it covered here in the Black Hills already, and the state, I've never seen them come in and start, want to take a specific area unless they have, someone has an agenda on the Black Hills or something, where they need it to go. So I agree, local and county control can take care of what they're thinking of already, and if we want to draft a letter, who would draft that letter?
Thank you.
Is what we need to, Jan?
We'll have Jan.
Could work with.
So what I would say is that, I believe, anyway, with, between Commissioner Drew's and I, we could draft a letter.
There you go.
And we could, you know, kind of circulate it, and, but anyway, and then have the chairman sign the letter.
That'd be fine. I, I, I mean, when you gotta, it's interesting how the state operates. They all, all these people want to fix the property tax, they cut the sales tax, they're short, you know, that's all we need to have them do, is go up there and take over what's happening in blue winged court or something, you know? So, I agree. Let's draft a letter.
Yeah, the other option, I believe, we probably could get it done, is if we, you know, it's not gonna take long, if, when we're on a break or before the end of the meeting, we could have a letter drafted and then bring it back in front of the board for approval.
If you could just ask the state.
Gary's not, he's on, he's on board with that. Go ahead.
If we could look at this, the state's budget through the state and the local, or the, through the county and the local government, and see where their spending should be in the future for the Black Hills, maybe they'd like to switch that around a little bit.
Yeah. So anyway, I would say before the end of the meeting, we'll have a letter drafted. I know we have executive session, and then when we come out after executive session, we could present.
Thank you, guys. I've allowed the conversation to kind of meander, but I thought it was important, because that's, the local control of what's happening in the hills is important. We've been here since 1970, and we have the beautiful Black Hills, we need to protect them. We don't need some outside agency, I mean, they can't even balance their budget, for God's sakes, so telling us what to do.
Hey, you keep yourself under control.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
If I could have the privilege of reading one whereas out of the concurrent resolution.
Thank you.
Says, whereas the overdevelopment of areas with new residential construction, the expansion of mineral and mining extractive industries, and government-sponsored economic development plans without proper and appropriate regulatory constraints may pose irreparable dangers to the beauty and health of the
may pose irreparable der- dan- dangers to the beauty and health of the Black Hills area.
Did you wake up in the middle of the night and write that one, or did you just get that out of your head?
Water group.
Chat GPT. Okay, I appreciate that, guys. Let's move on. Uh, we don't need any, uh, motion on that, do we?
Or Clean Waters wrote that.
Uh, people from, I got clean water in my house. Okay, um. Item. So any other legislative related items? We've come in and it's covered that. Uh, meetings from committee reports, and we'll start with Gary, the public library. Anything on that, Gary?
I went to the, the library meeting. Uh, there wasn't anything that needs to be reported.
Okay, perfect. We'll go on to Jerry, Building Committee. I, I was unable to attend Jerry, so I'm assuming that if you did, if not, we got Mr. Purcell here somewhere back. He's shaking his head. He's, he went to that meeting, so.
No, I was at the, uh, Building Committee to, this project, uh, you know, going for the brick grant was discussed there. Uh, talked about, uh, storage room construction for emergency management. And so on the building tour was a, you know, kind of a, there's a room back off emergency management. It's quite a large room they have storage in. And, uh, anyway, so buildings and grounds going to work with emergency management. There was talk of doing a remodel in that room. Uh, but anyway, there's a discussion about, uh, that room and then, uh, getting, uh, storage room construction, uh, lighting, new lighting and dispatch was talked about. Uh, they need some new lighting in there. Uh, courthouse tunnel was talked about, uh, and, uh, highway shop, a little vestibule enclosed area and, uh, some other things. And then, uh, talking about, uh, some renovations, uh, coming up at the courthouse for discussion points. And, uh, getting some, uh, restrooms in the basement of the courthouse in ADA compliance. And so that kind of covered the building committee.
Do you have anything on compensation committee?
Uh, compensation committee, yeah, I attended that meeting. It was quite short. So our state's attorney chaired that meeting. Uh, Jill Miller was absent, so she cracked it. And I think it was like a fifteen or twenty minute meeting, something like that, but. So anyway, but, uh, the, uh, the item that was discussed was about kind of our, uh, how we're paying out our overtime. And, uh, there's some consensus on that. And so department heads are going to go back and have that discussion. So, uh, anyway.
Okay.
But that was comp committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur. Um, Mr. Ron.
Uh, the one that they got marked on for me would be.
L A P C?
L A, and, uh, I was gone and, uh, Deb.
That's right. You were, he, Ron was in Oklahoma celebrating his buddy's birthday. Turned a hundred. The guy turned a hundred.
Technically, he turns a hundred on the nineteenth, so.
Okay.
I'm good with a hundred.
Well, you ate that cake that he had. What a beautiful cake.
Somebody equated that to minutes and then seconds, and you don't even want to go there.
We'll go to Commissioner Hancock on Planning Commission.
So the Planning Commission, um, I think the four meetings I attended in January, February were a total of an hour. Um, and you guys have seen, um, what we passed through, uh, since then. We have nothing different on there. Uh, we did have building report, building permit reports. Um, L A P C, basically, we talked about hazardous waste and the transfer of, transport of and where that, uh, uh, different areas in, uh, Pennington County and the surrounding area, um, have those hazardous waste. And then they have, I think it's in a, March or April, they'll have some, and I left my paper in my truck. Um, and I'll, I'll bring that to the next meeting. They'll have a, a couple of events in the spring and the fall where you can drop off some of your hazardous waste through the, um, waste department from the city. So. Always a good meeting.
Thank you. Um, the last one is for all, and we've really talked a lot about the legislative session, right? So, or is this something new, this S D A C C weekly legislative webinar? Is that different than?
Yeah, that's just a weekly meeting set up during legislative session with, uh, County Commission Association and their lobbyists to go over what the current bills are.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a reminder, there will be a Cracker Barrel this Saturday at ten o'clock, Hill City Community.
Ten o'clock in Hill City. And before the meeting, we're meeting at the Blue Wing Court, right?
Uh, that's right.
For some moonshine or whatever. Um, we had, we had a little bit of conversation about Cracker Barrel. What was important to me was a Black Hills stock show, and I don't think, I don't think, uh, Mr. Jeffries is here, but I'm, I would like to schedule him on for some point to give us an overview. I think they had a successful stock show. Some of you guys might know a little bit more about that than I do, but that thing is so amazing. It just, it brings so many people to our community and they spend tax dollars. If you look at the, the, um, the spikes with tax revenues, if you, when they get them, it spikes this time of year. And the only reason it spikes is because, I mean, it spikes often above where our tourism season is or even where December is. That's how much they bring to our community. So I think it's important that we recognize every volunteer that volunteers because he has like three hundred of them. So we'll send a note out to him from the commission office to maybe just tell us how it went for him and, and, and we'll all enjoy in success because I know the city really enjoys a lot of it. And sometimes they don't quite understand that, so.
We just ask him to come to the next meeting or Jan can call him and, and just ask him if he'd do an overview.
Yeah, we'll have, that'd be, that'd be awesome. And I guess I'll be looking for a motion to, I guess, to move into executive session.
Move to go into executive session pursuant S D C L one dash twenty five dash two. It's one for personal matters and pursuant to S D C L one dash twenty five dash two dash three for contractual matters and/or proposed or pending litigation.
We have a motion by Hancock.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous motion carries. We are in executive session. For a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
We have a motion by Hancock, second by Roskine to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Looking for, uh, some direction.
Gary, on the code of conduct.
Do your motion on the letter.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, I'd make a motion that the Pennington County Commission, uh, express opposition to HCR sixty ten, which to, uh, which would establish a task, a legislative task force for future development of the Black Hills.
We'll motion, have a motion from Drew, second from Hancock. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
And the letter is here.
I'd read it.
Okay, I'll read what I wrote up. And what I would propose to do is that the committee meets on Thursday, uh, the House Committee. Uh, I think it's House Committee, whichever committee. And so I would propose to write this up and, uh, submit it to the committee in opposition to it. The Pennington County Commission is unanimous in opposition to what HCR sixty ten purports to establish regarding future development of the Black Hills. We call your attention to the twenty year comprehensive plan Pennington County currently uses as our platform for future development. Obviously, this is subject to minor changes as time moves forward to better manage any development. Clearly, development within Pennington County is statutorily provided to local governmental authority with some uses also permitted by appropriate state agencies. Pennington County works diligently with the U.S. Government and State of South Dakota to effectively develop within the legal confines and best serve the taxpayers. Local control should remain as, at the local level, and we urge your opposition, HCR sixty ten.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Appreciate that. Let. Um, we have one more motion to make, right?
Correct. Yeah, I have a motion to direct our state's attorney's office.
Do we already?
We already voted on that.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. So, yeah, I have a motion to direct our state's attorney's office to work with outside legal counsel in, uh, drafts, changes, and coming forward for board discussion at a public meeting about our code of conduct policy.
For elected officials.
For, yeah, it's a code of conduct for elected officials.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Dur and a second from Hancock. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Motion from Hancock to adjourn?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
From Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Boom. Thank you.